I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and I ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Palmski? Here. Johnson?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill? Absent. Nudera?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Conquest?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Veremis? Absent. Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill? Absent. Levin? Present. Three absent.
Levin, present, three absent. We have a quorum. I apologize for the late start. This was an election site, and the volunteers and election judges have just completed tearing down the site for new equipment to be put in for tomorrow's election, and we appreciate all the work that they've done, and we're ready to get down to our business. Item three, receipt of written communications from the public clerk. Tamer, are there any written, sorry, does anyone in the audience have a written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. There being none, we'll go on to item four, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for a public forum?
There's none, Mayor.
There are none. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at public forum that did not have an opportunity to sign up? All right, we will close public forum. Item five is a presentation from Northern Illinois University on a strategic plan. City Manager, you want to do introductions and set it up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a process that the City Council and staff went through earlier this year. We have the report from the Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies, and with us tonight is Greg Kuhn and Jim Norris, who are facilitators and authors of the report, and they have a brief presentation for us tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, and counselor. I'm Greg Kuhn, and last time we were all together, I think we were at the college for our last workshop, but we've been working, and so have you, since that time. So this evening, I just wanted to briefly offer some highlights and summary of the process we went through in 2022, and follow along up on the screen. So for those that aren't familiar, my colleague, Jim Norris, and I, and the rest of the team, were from NIU Center for Governmental Studies. We've been around since 1969, and what's of interest is that I've had the opportunity, and others on the team have been working with the city now going on about 10 years. Strategic planning, for those that aren't familiar with the process, in short, strategic planning is leadership's expression of the future. And you say, well, how do we do that? We do it through a series of exercises and input sessions that we call a designed conversation. The 2022 process continued to build on the work that the city has done previously, so we weren't starting from a standstill. We had previous work that the city has done, and they've been committed to strategic planning as long as we've been engaged to assist with that work. The process, it included three council and senior staff workshops. We did visioning, we did SWOT analysis, and we had ideas and input from stakeholders. That input included six focus groups. We had two resident groups, one business group, one advisory board group, one intergovernmental, and one staff group. So at a high level, we've done this in the past, we look at the results of the goals, the discussions throughout the process, and we identified these five key issue areas that emerged in 2022. Starting at the top and going from the left to the right, the first strategic area we identified was for the city to work on strategic and cohesive commercial development. Secondly, community connectivity and safety improvements. Third, diversified recreation and cultural options and amenities. Down at the bottom, residential development and housing options, and lastly, community engagement. Now, these are broad categories. I just want to share with everyone, we have some discussion of those in our report, but for the sake of tonight and providing a highlight of things, this is where a lot of the discussions and the goals fell, in our view. So in the goals development, I'm going to highlight the top goals in each category, but briefly, as part of the exercises and the process, including all three meetings, goals were developed by the council. Staff was there and participated in that process. And in total, seven short-term goals under the routine category, using a matrix system that we use. There were seven short-term routine goals, 13 short-term complex goals, six long-term routine, and seven long-term complex. So the top-tier goals we wanted to highlight in each category. For short-term routine, update the city's downtown master plan. Now, just briefly, routine goals are goals that doesn't mean easy. Some of you might remember, we've been through this process several times, but one of the things to be mindful of is these categories have a set of kind of definitions and criteria, but routine items are items that the city could do largely on its own. If it puts its resources, time, and effort into it, there may be some outside help required, but largely could be something the organization could do. So the first in this category was to update the city's downtown master plan. Sorry, one other footnote, these are not in any particular order. These are just what fell within the top three of each of these categories. Secondly, identify options to maintain financial stability and maintain the city's AAA bond rating. Third, analyze city real estate assets via professional study and develop a plan to maximize those assets. Then, under short-term complex, the top three, analyze pending stormwater projects and strategize completion, including cost-benefit analysis and the potential for all the considered projects. Secondly, enhance traffic flow, safety, and mitigate congestion, improve traffic control, sorry, control throughout the community, and undertake some traffic study analyses. And lastly, to analyze fire department mission and services, including staffing and operational models. Under long-term goals, enhance communication and engagement to all residents through the development of a communication matrix. Secondly, refresh, revise, prioritize, and update the city's sustainability agenda for the future. And I just realized, I think I had a typo on one of my previous pages, there are only two long-term routine goals. This cycle, long-term complex, explore the concept and development of a municipal complex and municipal building plan. Implement the city's consensus stormwater projection completion, so this is a continuation of that short-term goal. And lastly, under this top three, develop a destination Elmhurst marketing strategy, including work on connectivity, transportation, the metro station, possible boutique hotel, tech and office innovations, mixed-use sports facility. There were a variety of things considered and discussed at the workshop. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our overview and summary, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with everyone again.
All right, this has been a long project with a lot of participation by our City Council members, including aldermen and all elected officials. So if you have any questions or comments, we will entertain them, but I do want to point out that this topic and the adoption of this strategic plan will be the subject of a committee of the whole session. So with that, I open the floor. Alderman Deuter.
Just a clarifying question to your last statement. So we have the presentation tonight, but at some subsequent meeting, we're going to be going into the details of this for discussion and...
If that's what the council would like to do, what we've done in the past is we've adopted a resolution, or the council has voted on a resolution adopting the plan, and then staff has worked towards operationalizing the strategic plan. If you remember the spreadsheets that we put together on the goals and who's in charge and what the timeframe is and all of that. But if there's comments before that, certainly, we can have that discussion, whether it's at committee of the whole or at the council meeting when we have the resolution. You can do it either way, I think.
All right. Well, in any event, maybe I miscue that, I thought we were going for committee of the whole, but there will be additional discussion one way or the other. And I see that you want to have some discussion, so you'll have an opportunity, or ask your questions tonight.
If I can offer a comment tonight, and it probably applies more to the next time that the city engages in a strategic planning process, more than it does this time around. So I'll offer it now, since our facilitators are here. You know, I appreciate the process. I think it's really important that we have a strong strategic plan to guide the activities of the city, especially with 14 of us who are generating our own ideas. We're hearing from the residents new ideas constantly, so it's helpful to have something that kind of keeps us moving in the right direction, based on kind of an overarching set of goals. So I do appreciate the importance of this. You know, I'll just note that in my experience in the process is that we received a lot of input from stakeholders, and somewhat separate from that, we generated a set of goals. So when I look through this, I see a disconnect between kind of these areas that emerged as priority areas and the goals that we've identified. You know, my suggestion for the next time around is that we really distill what the priority areas are and kind of the key issues that the community sees, that we as a council see, and then have the goals follow from those areas that are identified. So just a comment for the next time around, but appreciate all the work that was done.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Any other comments? All right. Thank you, thank you for waiting this evening, and we look forward to completing the rest of this process.
Our pleasure, thank you.
All right. Item six, announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Alderman Mulliner.
I just want to remind everybody, on November 11th, at 10:30 in the morning, at Wilder Park is the Veterans Memorial Ceremony. If it rains, it will be moved inside to the Wilder Mansion. And as a follow-up to that, on November 12th, the American Legion is having a fundraiser that's the songs, the stories behind the songs. So if you're interested, see me, and we'll get you set up for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce that on Thursday, November 17th, Alderman Veremis and I are hosting a town hall meeting for residents of the First Ward. It is going to be here in this room, starting at 7 o'clock. We'll be giving updates on a number of issues, and we are also going to be hearing from Stan Belicky, who's the Director of Public Works, and he is going to be talking about the College View Traffic Study and some other highlights of our street management system. So all are welcome to attend, November 17th, 7 o'clock.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Other announcements?
I do.
Clerk Tamer.
Tomorrow, November 8th, is the general election. Polls are open at 6:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM. You can go to the city's website for more information on where you can vote. Actually, you can vote anywhere in DuPage County, so that is new for this year. So anywhere in DuPage County, you can vote, that's a voting location. Also, Wednesday evening, November 9th, at York High School, the Commission on Youth, in partnership with the D-205 Foundation, the PTA Council is hosting Chris Heron for a drug prevention, alcohol prevention presentation. 7:00 PM, York High School Gymnasium, and that's it.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Any other announcements? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, if you would read the consent agenda, please.
7.1 minutes of executive session of the Elmhurst City Council on October 3rd, 2022. 7.2 minutes of the executive session of the Elmhurst City Council on October 17th, 2022. 7.3 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 17th, 2022. 7.4 minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on October 24th, 2022. 7.5, 2023 meeting schedule. 7.6, accounts payable, November 7th, 2022, $3,849,333.62. 7.7, report, 240 West Lake Tiff request. 7.8, report, Police Department Public Safety Drone purchase. 7.9, report, Water Reclamation Facility, bundle for amendment number one. 7.10, report, 2023 EGIS Consortium Service Provider Contract. 7.11, report HVAC improvement to the Elmhurst History Museum. 7.12, report HVAC repairs for the Public Works Garage. 7.13, report Arlington Reservoir Sump Pump. 7.14, report, North Reservoir Door Replacement. 7.15, report, One International HV607 Cab Chases. 7.16, report, One International HV607 Dump Truck. 7.17, report, Professional Engineering Services for Design of 2023 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and Televising Project. 7.18, report, Additional Costs for Six Ford Explorer PPVs, see item 9.1. 7.19, report, One Ford F-250 4x2 Pickup Truck, see item 9.2. 7.20, report, One Ford F-450 4x4 Dump Truck, see item 9.3. 7.21, report, One Ford F-550 4x4 Dump Truck, see item 9.4. 7.22, report, 105 South York Street Public Access Amendment, see item 9.5. 7.23, report, Jackson Stormwater Pumping Station MCC Repair, see item 10.1. 7.24, an ordinance granting assigned variation to the property commonly known as 140 North Robert Palmer Drive, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.25, an ordinance granting an amended conditional use permit for a planned unit development for the construction of an addition on the property commonly known as 105 South York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.26, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Spring Road Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.27, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a license agreement by and between Windstream Communications LLC and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.28, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of six Ford Explorers Police Pursuit Vehicles and the disposal of six 2017 Ford Explorers Police Pursuit Vehicles for the City of Elmhurst Police Department and repealing Resolution Number R-282022 entitled "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Six Ford Explorers for Replacement of the City's Police Department Vehicles and Authorizing the Disposal of Six Existing Vehicles", being PD-6, PD-7, PD-8, PD-9, PD-15, and PD-19. 7.29, "A Resolution Determining Estimated Property Taxes to Be Levied by the City of Elmhurst for the 2022 Tax Year." 7.30, "A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Design Engineering Services Agreement Between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois and Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for the 2023 Sanitary Manhole Evaluation and Rehabilitation Design Project." And 7.31, "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Microsoft 365 Software as a Service Licenses for the City of Elmhurst."
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item that an alderman would like to remove from the consent agenda, either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Palmski.
7.7.
7.7. Any other items? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 7.7. Alderman, Alderman Mulliner. Motion, Alderman Mulliner. Second, Alderman Jensen. Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please, on the consent agenda, minus item 7.7.
Palmski? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill? Absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis? Absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill? Absent. Levin, ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Levin, ayes, zero nays, three absent. The consent agenda, minus item 7.7, is approved. Clerk Tamer, would you read the report title on 7.7, please?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the in-kind Tiff assistance request to bring city water and storm sewer to the project site, vacate the alley, and waive permit fees, and the direct Tiff assistance of $394,000 for other Tiff-eligible costs in an annual 50/50 pay-as-you-go format with an anticipated payback date to the developer in 2029 and the city expenses in 2038. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the redevelopment agreement for City Council approval. Signed, Danny Palmski Chair, Mark A. Mulliner Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman, Ward 6.
I have a motion to bring item 7.7 before the council. Alderman Palmski with the motion, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. We intended for this to be on reports, not because of any concern, but just because this address has been the subject of other agenda items, and we just wanted to provide some clarification about where this process is. So in 2021, the committee agreed to approve $585,000 in Tiff assistance for 240 West Lake Street, which is situated in the north side in the Lake Street Tiff District, and that included extension of city water main and stormwater, storm sewer waiver permit fees, vacation of the alley, and that was all combined within 585. And that was based upon the developer seeing an 8.5% return on investment with 36 units in the townhome development. That application was not recommended by the zoning planning commission, and the applicant withdrew their request. The applicant does intend to reapply, which will be a separate request, and as we said, with the first Tiff approval, our approval of Tiff assistance in this case also has no bearing on our approval of any zoning relief. The committee discussed the developer's updated Tiff request for a 30-unit development, which was an additional, the original request for the second design was an additional $793,000 over what had been approved, for a total request of $1.699,493. But the committee ultimately concluded that a lesser amount of $1.3 million, which is an additional $394,000 over what had been approved, to be appropriate. One change, as we noted, that we've got, there's a lower return on development, return on investment, and there also are additional opportunities for neighborhood stormwater improvements, which, including a water main project that has been addressed, at least in, to seek engineering in Public Works. The projected property tax increment has an estimated payback of approximately five years for the developer and 12 for the city. The projected increment upon completion of the project is about $350,000 annually. And if it comes online in 2026 with an estimated 3% increase each year, the project is expected to produce $5 million in property tax increment, given the Tiff lasts through 2039 as planned. So like the original Tiff request, we ask for your approval, and approving this project, approving this Tiff request stands on its own. We would expect the developer to proceed with a separate application through zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Palmski. Additional comment? Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, this project, this lot has been vacant for quite a long time, and it's a good thing that it's being looked at for development. This particular development is, looks to be about $15 million, and the Tiff request is 1.3, 1.4 million, so almost 10% of the project. However, a lot of it is infrastructure development that is not only going to benefit this particular parcel, but I think I read that there might be, there would be some help for the residents on Maple in terms of their sanitary problem, sanitary sewer problems they had. So I do, I do see some benefit from that. The, one question I have, is there a windfall clause in this agreement, meaning their ROI is fairly modest, and that's why they're looking for some incentive over and above the infrastructure help? We usually have in Tiffs some kind of windfall clause where if they sell the units not for $500,000 but $600,000, or the cost of the units is much less, and their ROI is a lot greater. Just want to make sure that's in there.
We did not, well, we're talking, we based this upon their estimated sale price. I do know that we did realize that some of the estimates for the infrastructure, for example, it is possible that, let me see, where we may have $300,000 for stormwater, that might actually be less expensive, and there was some discussion about the city benefiting for where the estimate was different, so...
I think it's in our policy.
Well, then, okay, then it's a standard thing, okay.
That we would have that in the agreement, so assuming it will be in there when the city attorney has it, so.
Okay, so then I think we would see that in the RDA as we come to that.
Okay.
Alderman Palmski?
That's all, thank you.
Signaling through, all right. Other discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer, we'll call the roll.
Palmski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Present.
Okay. Toledo?
Aye.
Hold on one second, guys. Okay, Cahill? Absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis? Absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill? Absent. Make sure I get this right. 10 ayes, 1 present, 3 absent.
All right, 10 ayes, zero nays, 1 present, 3 absent, and item 7.7 is adopted. I want to thank the committee for a lot of very thorough and hard work on this one. All right, we're moving on to reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. I have a number of items. Both York and IC football teams were victorious. York won against Marist in overtime in the Class A state champions. They're two notches into it, and IC defeated Stillman in the Class A championships. They're going to play the number, IC's playing number one ranked Princeton on Friday, York is playing on Friday, so it's a lot of good news for sports fans like Alderman Nudera, coaches, I should say. We'll get a report on that from you later. All right, so congratulations to both teams and good luck going forward. I also want to announce that the Bike and Walking Working Group that we have been working on for the last few months is forming in consultation with some of my fellow aldermen. We have selected 11 of the many applicants. We had a lot of fine applicants who were not able to, we were not able to accommodate, but we can congratulate and look forward to working with those who were selected. We'll have more on that coming up. There is a, our fire department is presenting a junior fire academy on Saturday, November 12th, between 1 and 4. You can sign up on the website, it's $25. This is the first time it's been conducted. It looks like it'll be fun and interesting for those who sign up. I don't remember the age requirements, but it'll be on the website. Next item, I've had a lot of discussion about signs in the parkway. We are going to both take them down directly on Wednesday, so if anyone has signs in the parkway, they don't belong there, it's city property, except for garage sales where it can be up immediately beforehand. And in future elections, I can tell you that we would want to enforce them a lot more strictly so that we don't run into problems. I get complaints on both sides. Which leads to the voting, as Alderman Mulliner mentioned, is tomorrow. I hope everyone will get out and exercise their constitutional rights and do that. Municipal elections are coming up in April, so the time to get your petition to run for the aldermanic seats that are open there is... the Aldermanic off, seats that are open, there is one open in every ward, is now. Lastly, this week, we had, I hosted with the, through the Senior Commission, a conversation with seniors, coffee and conversation, and I got to tell you that we had our police department, our fire department, and many service providers present. I learned a number of things that we offer our seniors in the community that I didn't know about. There was Metropolitan Family Services, the library, some of the programs that we have to our seniors is really impressive, so that will be coming, be presented on cable and online, so it's something worth watching, not just to see me, but, you know, for other reasons. So with that, City Manager.
Thank you, just one item to add. We had the first of two leaf collections last week during regular garbage pickup. We'll have another one at the end of the month, and details are on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. That brings us to ordinances. 9.1.
The mayor, just have a quick.
Sure, Alderman Dunn.
Sorry to slow us down. Just want to report on ONCC. We had an executive committee meeting last Monday, and it was a rather quick meeting. Approved the agenda for the upcoming full ONCC meeting, which was last Friday. I was appointed as a member of the exec committee, and so Elmhurst has a seat on that now, which is a plus for us having input into future policy in regards to O'Hare issues and operations. Then I also want to give a little shout out to, Suburban Life has ranked the best downtown in DuPage, Elmhurst City Center. I think that's great to see, and it's certainly not surprising, because we all know how great our downtown is.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and congratulations on your appointment. It's good to have a seat at the table, and you've done a lot of hard work on behalf of our community with respect to that. Alderman Mulliner?
Just a correction, the York game is on Saturday at 1:00 at York.
Thank you. All right, any other announcements? Oh, actually, we're under reports, any other reports? All right, ordinances. Tamer, if you could read the ordinance for 9.1.
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of six Ford Explorers Police Pursuit Vehicles and the disposal of six 2017 Ford Explorers Police Pursuit Vehicles for the City of Elmhurst Police Department and repealing Resolution Number R-282022 entitled "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Six Ford Explorers for Replacement of the City's Police Department Vehicles and Authorizing the Disposal of Six Existing Vehicles," being PD-6, PD-7, PD-8, PD-9, PD-15, and PD-19, see item 7.18.
I can have a motion to put ordinance 9.1 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman, Hanquist, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this may appear to be a deja vu moment. We actually approved these vehicles in, earlier in 2022. Unfortunately, we did place the order, but the manufacturer canceled because of the inability to deliver in 2022 model with that contract. So we're looking to resubmit for the same vehicles, but they'll be 2023 models. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 9.1 is adopted. Onto ordinance 9.2. Clerk Tamer?
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-250 four-by-two pickup truck and the disposal of one 2013 Ford F-250 four-by-two vehicle, unit PW-54, for the City of Elmhurst Utility Division, see item 7.19.
All right, may I have a motion to bring item, ordinance 9.2 before the council? Alderman Brennan, second Alderman, Hanquist, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, 9.2, 9.3, and 9.4 under ordinances, we'll have a similar talk track, so I'm going to address it with 9.2. So this vehicle, or these three vehicles that we're looking at, actually, these three items that we're looking at, were before committee. We had a discussion as it relates to, is this, is there really an immediate need, you know, to, to replace these, these vehicles? And, you know, given their condition, given the lead time, the answer was yes. So as we, each of these reports up above in the consent agenda, the way we're looking at this, given the uncertainty of the market, is that we're looking to purchase these vehicles up to what we've budgeted for these vehicles. If by chance, you know, we looked to purchase these vehicles, if it's over the budgetary amount, we won't move forward. So that's the structure within each of these, these reports and how they are reflected in these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Additional discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 9.2 is adopted. Onto ordinance 9.3. Clerk Tamer?
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-450 four-by-four dump truck and the disposal of one 2008 Ford F-450 four-by-four vehicle, unit PW-26, for the City of Elmhurst Forestry Division, see item 7.20.
We have a motion to bring ordinance 9.3 before the council. Motion, Alderman Brennan, second Alderman, Hanquist. Any discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 9.3 is adopted. Onto ordinance 9.4. Clerk Tamer, would you read the ordinance?
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Ford F-550 four-by-four dump truck and the disposal of one 2005 Ford F-450 four-by-four vehicle, unit PW-119, for the City of Elmhurst Forestry Division, see item 7.21.
We have a motion to bring ordinance 9.4 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman, Hanquist. Any discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 9.4 is adopted. Ordinance 9.5, Clerk Tamer, read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of the public access easement on the property commonly known as 105 South York Street in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, see item 7.22.
I may have a motion to bring ordinance 9.5 before the council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman, Hanquist, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a report up in the consent agenda that we had approved, suspend the rules. The rationale for suspending the rules is 105 South York Street, which is, you know, posy, deputes, they're looking to enclose their patio, and for them to properly permit to do that required us to move around or concede this, this easement, which will, you know, be good for the area and, you know, certainly look forward to seeing that come to fruition.
Sure. All right, any discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Ordinance 9.5 is adopted. Onto item 10, resolutions 10.1. Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution ratifying the execution of a contract between Engineered Services, Inc., DBA, Powerlink Electric, and the City of Elmhurst for the Jackson Storm Pump Station Electrical Repair and Gate Apparator Replacement Project, see item 7.23.
May I have a motion to bring Resolution 10.1 before the council? Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman, Hanquist. I feel we're getting into a rut here. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, up in the consent agenda, we had a report that addresses, unfortunately, a pumping station that is out of commission at the moment. We had a control panel, motor control panel, that has gone out, and there is lead time associated with that, so we're looking to suspend the rules so we can pass this and get the motor repaired as quickly as possible. We're, I think we're still looking at a fairly decent lead time, you know, for the motor to come in, but we certainly want to move as quickly as possible.
Alderman Brennan, other discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis, absent. Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill, absent. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent. Resolution 10.1 passes. Eleven, item 11, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none. Item 12, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman, you got, motion by Alderman, Hanquist, second by Alderman Brennan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned. We are going to go into committee of the whole pretty directly, so.